My name is Dr. Jen Warren. I'd like to call the board meeting for the, call the meeting to order. And for this workshop, there is comment cards, but we're not doing those right during the work session. So.
You can't. Anybody does.
If anybody has a comment card, let us know. We'll be there for that. So for right now, and that would be agenda item number six. If somebody does have a comment card, just bring it on up and it'll be passed over. And for right now, I would like to ask everybody who was able to please stand for the mic. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you so much, everybody. From now, we're gonna go over for roll call, please. Mrs. Philippi, present. Mr. Klein.
Present.
Mrs. Luthy, present. Mrs. McHale. Here. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Dr. Warren.
Here.
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence. Thank you so much. All right, and now I'm looking for approval of the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two work session agenda.
It's been moved and supported.
It's been moved and supported. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that would lead us to presentations back to Mr. Garg. [00:01:55.81]
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody. It's a pleasure to have you at our work session this evening. We have four different presentations for the board to review. First off, we'll invite up the middle school dean's two proposal, and we've got Mr. Donahue, Mr. Anderson, and Sir Robert.
Good evening, Jack. Thank you for showing up.
You're welcome. I'm sweating. I gotta off. It was so rainy.
First off, thank you for inviting us in and, you know, having the time to ask some questions and make sure that we're all on the same page in regards to the proposal that we have from the board to for a proposal tonight at the board meeting at seven o'clock. What we found out over the last three years being in our building with the addition of PDIS program, which was something that was mandated to the middle school three, little over three years ago, was a change in philosophy of how we deal with students in the classroom in our building that may need some additional help, whether it's social, emotional health, whether it's due to acting out of classroom management issues. And so we wanted to, our first year of implementation was my first year in the building, and, you know, we were there for a couple of months before COVID hit. We were just getting started with it with our staff as a whole. Then COVID hit, we were out the rest of the year. Then the next year that we came in, we were getting out again with everything going on. And we never got a strong solid foundation for the PDIS program until this past school year. In this past school year, being older in the building, working with our students and our staff, we came to realize that what the perfect PDIS program, as they talk about it in webinars and conferences and stuff like that, when you put it into a functioning and working system, it has to be modified to fit our district and our building. We spoke with and went and visited Mark Rayhead in, what district? Woodhaven. Woodhaven. Woodhaven, to see how they were doing theirs. And we were able to kind of combine some of those things that to fit what we were doing in our building. Through this all, what we did find out is that Ken, who had been hired just before I got here to run the PD, or I'm sorry, well, the PDIS program, the camp responsibility center, is that it is an ever-evolving position and job and job duties that have come on board. And in this past year, we really saw that. And listening to teachers and what they were seeing and what their needs were, we made and adapted changes throughout the school year to make sure we were addressing the teachers' needs and wants, but at the same time also making sure that we honored the social, emotional section of what our school improvement plan was in using PDIS. Through that, what we found is really everything that Ken, we're looking at the position, making the position more significant because as Ken is currently working through edgy staff, we realized that we needed the position truly to be a Allen Park Public Schools and fully position. And that's what we're bringing for. In taking a look at the programs in surrounding districts in the Down River area, in Wayne County through Wayne Resa, we came up with the idea of middle school dean of students as the position title. And I've heard, you know, concerns and issues in regards to that of that this is an administrative position. We have teachers that have come back and then, you know, gave us information back that they're concerned that this is a position where they would be, that Ken would be coming in to evaluate staff. Absolutely not, in no way, shape, or form is this ever discussed, talked about, or wanted. The dean of students quote unquote ideal was just, again, a position that is commonly known throughout this area. It could easily be called PDIS coordinator, behavior interventionist, processualist, student advocate. So I wanted to put that to rest right away with all of you if there was concerns about that. We have, we are not hooked to this dean of students title. If that will help ease some of the questions or concerns that either you have and/or staff that have contacted you may have. Fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. With that being said, some of the things that, that were going.
Oh, this question.
That we wanted to talk about, I believe it was Mr. Martin who sent some questions in late June, early July in regards to some of the things that were going on about, you know, how, how is this position working? Is it actually working for our students? And so we wanted to go through some of these key points in regards to this. First and foremost, I think everyone needs to understand that when we got the three tiers, think of a triangle. Tier one is all of our students. And what are we offering our students on a daily basis in all of our classrooms? Straight across the board, every one of our students. Where it starts to kind of get into the meat and potatoes is when we get into tier two. And tier two are those students that are identified needing a targeted or strategic academic or behavioral intervention. And this is where Ken shines. With the checkout, as one example, the checkout, check-in and checkout procedure, he meets daily with all of these students and works with them to make sure that they're organized, that they're studying, making contact with parents. And what we've seen throughout the year is not only an increase in our scores, and some of that's listed right here, obviously for the case of. Totally wouldn't like, totally like, but, but for check-in and checkout kids, their scores have improved. Well, yeah, their scores have improved, but we haven't used actual full names. We just put L. on down for, for that sake. But throughout it all, we have seen an absolute increase in our NWEA scores by the organization and by making sure that we have somebody that is reaching out to them on a daily basis, talking to them and encouraging them. This is just, again, a sample. I was not going to go through every single student and list every single student here, but we've had success with it all along. And the tier three students that have been identified needing intensive intervention, there were fifteen students in our building that were receiving the tier three support. And through that, one hundred percent of the tier three students showed improvement in, in their scores. Now, and, and I don't want to say just for scores, but also the behavior. And I think that's the important thing is, is there a vacuum out in the classroom or not. And for some of that, it's quite significant. And scrolling back up, when we're taking a look at what, what the position and titles, the things that are not highlighted in yellow are what his standards are, what he's already been doing. But if we address the first one, which is including the majors, the majors and minors list is what the teachers came up with the year before that I got here. I think that was with the work of Dr. T. And working with them are what are minor classroom management issues that they, as teachers, should be handling. But then after maybe a couple of times of that, needing additional support from someone outside of the classroom, to the majors, which is fight in a classroom. And it is just one example. And what's happened is that Ken will take care of mostly, he'll take care of mostly the minor situations and working with the students, working with staff management, and making the contact with the parents. As part of this addition, I guess, what we're looking for is wanting to give him the ability to work with the students that were sent out to the majors, to be able to investigate the situation, talk with the students on both sides, find out exactly what's going on. And then at that point, be able to make contact with parents, contact with Mr. Andrews and/or myself regarding, regarding what the discipline will be.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
I would imagine that many of the students that fall into, you know, participating in a major offense would be students that you're seeing in tier two and tier three intervention anyway. Correct? Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay. So thus, you probably have a great deal of information that you can provide Mr. Andrews and Mr. Donahue about those students as well.
Yes.
Cool.
And just to add to that, right now, there was a lot of overlap. Last year, when stuff would happen like that, he would investigate. I would be in the middle of something else. I'd have to break out of that, and he would have to read that shit all with me. I'd have to interview. We were doing double work a lot of the time, so I was doing something else. So this would help free up me to stay focused with what I'm doing while he's doing something else. It got redundant.
When, when I, when I began three years ago, I was just in the PRC managing papers, managing kids that came in with a think-out sheet. We would deal with their minor offenses and they would move on. A lot of the role, the expanded role that we're talking about, I've been doing over the course of the last three years. As, as, as I've gotten to know the student body, as Bruce and Pat have gotten to know me and trust in my abilities, as the teachers have gotten to know me and trust in my abilities, for the most part, the, the job itself is something I've been doing for some time now. What this would allow me to do is perform in the duties that I'm doing without having to, to take them. You know, I don't know how many times I've waited in the office because, you know, Bruce has a lot of observations. Now, when there's a tier two kid who commits a major offense, I'll be able to handle that as I know he would want me to, as essentially I've been trained to do, but without the authority to do. So as, as this role has, has evolved, the responsibilities have evolved.
Gotcha. Thank you.
As we piloted trying some of these different things during the fourth quarter, I think what was significantly important to, to present is that the, by contract, we are supposed to observe teachers twice a year. And that's it. We got forty-four teachers. That's eighty-eight observations throughout the school year to do. We do that. We do more than that. But during the fourth quarter, when we really focused on getting into the classrooms during the month of April and May, Bruce and I were able to get into all the teachers' classrooms a total of eighty-eight times in seven weeks, anywhere from five minutes to twenty minutes each. And as we're looking at moving forward, and as you guys are asking us and saying to us, test scores, you want to see an improvement in test scores? Then this is where it comes down to, this allows Bruce and I, who you have hired me as the manager of that building, as instructional leader of that building. It's not something I can do alone. That's why I have an assistant principal who's also come on as instructional leader. And we're going into these classrooms, especially this year, we're starting with the data dialogues, things that the elementary schools have been doing. Yeah, have been doing, doing for multiple years at the elementary with these data dialogues. We're just starting that this year. And it's going to take both of us the time, effort, and, and learning, a learning curve for us in regards to being in these classrooms, having these data dialogues with them. And this allows us to do that with Ken taking care of some of the other issues.
Can you just elaborate on these data dialogues?
So data dialogues are actually what we're taking a look at, where we're looking at individual student informational data for their testing, whether they're tested, and maybe it can be, mostly it's a process of the NWEA testing, to see where there are high performers, where are their rate, rate, grade level, and then the ones that are deficient in certain areas. And working with those, with the teachers to recognize, okay, these, you've got multiple different students in your classroom that need differentiated instruction, and how are you going about addressing that to pull those kids up and to help those students that, that are showing some deficiencies in particular.
And I think moreover than that, once those kids are identified, we could revisit in a couple of months with that teacher and look at those students and see how they're performing. So we're trying to catch, I think, we used to turn low hanging fruit a lot with our students, catch the kids that we can move into that next area of scores where they would be proficient, if you will. So it's a, it's a process, and we're learning it together. And our staff is, they're going to learn it with us. So this is a big culture shift for our building, if you will. This whole data, 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 dive, and trying to really pick apart classrooms and point out what we need to do better.
The fancy term for that is MTSS, you know, these multi-tiered systems of support.
What's these data dives? Do you work with the department PLCs? That on the horizon, is it being done on any level now?
It will be this coming on school year.
One of the things that, you know, I learned through interviewing elementary administrators is where they actually thought the data showed perhaps some social, emotional issues, but as they dug deeper into the data, they actually found there was an academic area that was deficient. So that takes the team, and by the team, I mean you guys and, you know, sleep, you know, the professional learning community. Working together.
One hundred percent.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's also something new that we're truly reaching out to thousands of middle schoolers. Well, we've really focused at the elementary levels for years now, and we started to bring that. As far as the edginess process has changed a lot. And so this, this is a real big step we're doing out of the middle school and also following up in high school.
And looking forward to it. I think that it's exciting. You know, we had the elementary principals this past, was that May or June? Sit down and present to us what they are doing in their buildings and how they are doing it. And when we came away totally invigorated with how we can attack and address this at the, at the middle school level. But again, it's, it's gonna be, we've got forty-seven teachers in our building, and, and being able to get into these observations, have these data dive conversations individually with all these teachers. I need Bruce as, as, you know, my goal to, as someone that's going to be helping out with this. And, and that does, that does transform how Allen Park Middle School does business. And four years ago, when I came in, and I just missed it, and I think my first day was just after this presenter came in, and he was talking to the whole school district in regards to me and Allen Park being in a snowball. And, and I remember that, I think Mike was telling me, and John had been telling me about this after the fact, about how he was talking about this, and it is truly time to bust the snow this one day and take a look at what else is going around, how things are happening in other districts around us, how we're seeing improvements in these other districts and in these other schools. And we cannot keep doing things the same way that we are. And, and part of that is the belief system as an assistant principal is the disciplinary animal all the time, one hundred percent of the time. It's just not reality in law. It's not, and we have to be able to expand his role out to be that instructional leader, helping out with the teachers, having those hard conversations, looking in regards to data. Say, if you look at, it's just no longer I've got the feeling anymore that my kids are doing well. The data shows that that's not the case. We have to be able to have those conversations and move forward.
How many students are in the middle school?
Eight hundred and eighty-nine to us next year as of today.
Ken, how many teachers would you say in your tenure at the middle school tend to use the service that you provide?
Well, I tend to look at that as, if I may make an analogy, how many citizens of the city use the fire department? Well, I might, well, even, even, even citizens who've never made the call or never had a fire have that available. So I can't give you a hard number. I have, I have the data in, in my drive. I, you know, I could, I could provide you that answer for how many teachers exactly.
I could chime in on without the school in school suspension as the assistant. My nine would be, if I walked in, Mike's walked in there a few times, and walked right back out, thanks. But I'd have a line from my office almost to the hallway, and that would just eat up my day. I couldn't even get to lunch. What we're doing now is, is totally changing how we deal with kids. I don't have that long line. I've got kids, but I can spend more time with them, quality time, rather than just processing them in a. But I can tell you, the ones that use in school suspension are the ones using PDIS as well. We got teachers doing PDIS, not sending them to the camera room, and they don't even know what they're doing. They're doing it the right way. They're teaching their way, which works better. They don't have the discipline problems that need to be sent out of them because they, they call for that respect within their classroom, and they handle it on their own. For the teachers there, you know, you kind of know what I'm talking about. So I would say there's, there's a very good percentage, the answer, that use it. There's something I know. Just don't use it. Anyhow, whatever system we would have, they would use it anyway.
It's a system of thirds. Third, the teachers are going to use it, they're going to buy into it. Another third, the middle third are going to wait, see here how it's working out. They may try it, they may use it, and you've got a third that are just like, I'm not going to use it, I'm going to deal with it on my own. Great job. Good. That's, that's truly what we want. We want you practicing those, those MTSS and PDIS strategies within the classroom. And that's the big part of it.
In-class management is the preferred means of discipline. We want teachers to manage their classrooms. And, and I think we have tremendous teachers. We have incredibly skilled professionals at the middle school. I've been to a lot of different schools. We, we have a phenomenal team at the middle school. So sometimes when I, when I look at teachers that I don't spend a lot of time with, that I don't get a lot of kids from, it's not an indication to me that they don't have an appreciation for what it is that I provide. It's an indicator to me that they have top-end classroom management skills.
Well, I don't know two scenarios just from this past year that are those teachers that don't, would never necessarily be able to manage their classroom, period. But they both had a student in their classroom that they had to reach out, and they needed some help, and you guys were there for that as well. So I definitely, so even that one third that we're saying might not ever, some of them, unfortunately.
I don't, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a single teacher in the middle school that I didn't get a kid from at some point. So, so even the teachers that we're talking about who never use the PRC, that, that never isn't literal. I've gotten kids from, from every teacher.
Could you speak to this idea of through your interventions, says every single student increased in their NWEA scores from fall to spring? Do you do any academic work, or is your focus behavioral?
Those are the tier two intervention kids. Okay. I don't do academic work in terms of two plus two, and I don't do tutoring. What I do with the tier two kids is check-in and check-out. And these are kids that we've targeted for a tier two intervention because they've had socio-emotional needs that have shown or academic needs that have shown. So they start and they finish their day with me. So students, instead of going to first hour, they come to my classroom in the morning, and we start with the very basics with these kids. It's not so much is your homework done or whatever, it's are you well today? How are you today? Did you eat breakfast this morning? Did you get some sleep last night? So it is very holistic in its approach. So we make sure kids that are well, and I just try to get them off on a good start for their day. Some, with some kids, that's a matter of getting those papers lined up in their folder so they're not falling out of their arms. With other kids, it might be a higher level of intervention where, where we talk about things that are going on at home, things that are going on socially in school that they're going to need to navigate. So there's no cut and dry formula for each kid, but they, they all show up with their own individual issues. We try to get them off to a good positive start in the morning, and then we get them to a good positive finish at the end of the day. And for me, the, the one thing that I think I provide for a lot of those kids that doesn't get realized is, is I'm willing to say the word no to them. I am a believer in accountability. And it's not always puppy dogs and ice cream with those kids. It's not always, you know, life is tough and, you know, it's not their fault, just go manage the best you can. Sometimes it's life is tough, you still need to get your math homework done. And, and here are the ways, there's those strategies you can use to do that. So essentially, with these check-in, check-out students, I start with them, I finish with them, and I just help them to navigate through their day. And the numbers have shown that having somebody to do that, the natural progression is an increase in their NWEA scores.
But, but with that, just as part of it is that as you're going through, you're checking on those students, checking in with those students, realizing that they are missing work because you're having conversations with the teachers.
Yes.
You're, you're, you're making those phone calls home to your parents, saying, hey, this is where your child is at in case you haven't checked my stuff. And a majority don't.
A lot of it's parent help, though, it's.
Right, parent help.
I think that's.
The reason it's there.
So what's happening though is then, then Ken is talking with the parents and urging the kids to go to our after-school homework club. And that has become so popular now, and one of the reasons why the kids are starting to excel, their scores are starting to go up, their grades are still starting to go up, that for this year, we're actually increasing homework club from two days a week to four days a week. Because it's, we have a lot of teachers just today that are all on board with it and are willing to help out.
Something very important note too, with each, and I skipped it, forgive me. Part of the thing with check-in, check-out is the partnership that's formed for each student. It's all the teachers on their schedule, myself, and their parent. And I'm just sort of the intermediary in that partnership where those four entities combine for the betterment of the student. So I'm in contact with their teachers each day. I have a daily report card that they bring to me where the teachers can make notes and let me know what's going on in the classroom. I then relay that information to parents, and then we, we connect those four dots so that the student has all the things that they need to succeed.
So any and all emails would go to the whole team? The child, the parent, and the home teacher?
Not always. No, some teachers may email individually with the parent. I have phone conversations with the parent. But, but we do have regular conversations based on their scores. If, if a student is coming to me, they're doing really well, we just, we just kind of let it ride and let it increase. But when students don't meet, don't reach their score, that's when I can go to those individual teachers and I can say, you know, you only met sixty percent of your goal for the last week, and it's been third hour each day that you have the issue. So now I can go with the student, and I can reach out to that teacher and say, hey, what's going on during third hour? Where it's been really valuable is where I've been able to advocate for the teacher with the student. You know, sometimes the teacher might not have a great relationship with a student where I do. Sometimes I might not have a great relationship with a student where the teacher will. But we can support each other, and, and the student gets to see, you know, you know, maybe Mr. Garg isn't so unfair. Even Mr. Ryder agrees that I should be staying awake in the classroom. So those partnerships are very important to us in what we do.
So with your check-in, that happens during first hour?
It does, yes.
So how.
I see that first hour.
First thing in the morning?
Okay. What's the time period of that?
About ten minutes.
Five minutes.
Five minutes of first hour, it's a quick.
How many students do you have show up for checking?
By the end of the year, thirteen.
So thirteen were tier two students.
Correct.
Yeah, that's thirteen moving to tier three, so you have a crossover.
Yeah, that's thirteen moving to tier-three, so you have a crossover. What's the number of tier-two versus tier-three students?
I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Knowing tier-three.
Knowing those students so well.
Fifteen tier-three.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so. Any of the tier-two moving to tier-three?
We did have it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So. What's the total number between tier-two and tier-three?
Of the same kids.
Not just in total, but does that mean it's any, like, like you have, at the end of the year, you have fifteen tier-three, end of the year, you have how many tier-two?
About fifteen. They have thirty. Those numbers already depend on each other.
About thirty students, tier-two, tier-three.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna have the same question, but from a different angle, I think, I need to be bold, it's really what you're positioned about, and, and so I think, so I'm excited to see those, I think, medium those, when kids have that kind of support, then we hope it trickles into this academic success. Tell me a little bit more about the sampling piece, like, like seeing these students increase by that is super exciting, right? Um, so if we get that kind of academic achievement being, like, doing these things, that's exciting. Tell me about the sampling. Is that, like, that indicative of those fifteen kids on average, they're kind of moving forward, or are those, or are those like the high flyers or the tom and the dons? Probably, well.
You can call the numbers on the NWEA scores. Um, every, every, every single student that was in tier-two increased, some by two points, others by, also, what was it, seventeen points in regards to it.
So this is, when you say sampling, this is a reasonably rela- it's a representational group.
Yes, absolutely.
Not just the six high flyers.
No, correct, correct, absolutely. We could pull every single one up and they all increased at different, I just wasn't gonna do it for how it's been with sampling.
So with the tier-two students, you said they meet during first hour?
Correct.
If you had fifteen of them, you have a lineup of these fifteen, how do you fit along?
I sure do. We, we.
Yeah, the number starts at eight.
Probably more than five minutes, but the kids hit there before the bell rings as well. So our school's open kind of fifteen minutes before the bell rings, they're up there already. So, a lot of them already in and out before the first bell rings. Um, so he can get them going pretty quick, and the kids get used to the routine. Some will check in real quick, and they're literally there a minute because they got their, their sheet, and all is perfect, they're usually grabbing a little bit of breakfast and then throw up. He may, correctly, my mom, really, um, nail down two or three, I think, is their study.
Yes, per day, two or three kids stick around. Um, part of check-in, check-out is that kids, kids do have a, a pass, so to speak, to get to class late, but we've determined that in a forty-seven-minute class period, being a minute or two late, ready and, and organized and, and able, it is better than being there, you know, two minutes on time, not, not prepared.
Some of those kids are gonna be more than two minutes.
From time to time, they are.
You have the fifteen to twenty minutes, like.
For, for, that is true, yes.
That's happened.
Sure, that, that's true, but it's.
It has happened.
It has happened, it's, it's never on a daily basis, but we, we've had no students who show up fifteen minutes late to class daily. It just, it just doesn't operate that way. But, do we have students that will show up to class fifteen minutes late on a given day? Yes. Those are students who are probably gonna be sent out of that classroom anyhow. If there's a, if there's a student that has an issue that requires, requires me keeping them behind and, and not sending them onto class, if I did send them onto class, those are kids that are gonna end up to me with a check-in, check-out sheet anyhow.
And, and probably disrupt their young kids.
So I'm looking at from appearance, they. And today's parent, speaking to me. How could my kid pass? You checked him out of class for fifteen, twenty minutes.
The boys, not their fault.
Our answer to. Because you're telling me then, you're just talking about sharing a social emotional side.
Our answer to that is in those numbers. Though, those numbers are, are, that would be my answer to parents. When a parent says, hey, you kept my kid for five minutes every day, how in the world are his scores supposed to go up? And I would say, well, his score's going up.
Scores may go up pretty big in class, too.
But, see, I, Stephen, just.
I haven't heard that yet.
No, we haven't. I haven't. But, I mean, truly, he's got such a loyal following of parents, um, because they found somebody that is com- connecting with them as parents and with their student there, and, I mean, that, that has been wonderful in regards to it. And, and let's say this is, when we talk about scores, and maybe that was the, maybe scores was, was, uh, only part of it, it, we, we got scores, like the NWEA scores are just what the sampling rate here is, but their grades, overall, in the class, have gone up. It's not just an NWEA score, it is just their grades in the class have gone up.
And Mr. Ben, who you mentioned earlier about, you know, kids, these particular students hitting their target, what's the tendency?
Well, it depends upon each individual student. I mean, we have, we have targets for NWEA of, of what they should based upon the fall scores, what they should be at the halfway point come January, and then where they should be at the end of the year. That's one target, but it can be, in these interventions that we put forward, it can be as simple as being to, depending upon what's happening, being to all the classes on top of their targets. Um, it can be not, not being sent out, not disturbing the class for a full day. If you cannot, if you can sit and be in class and your teacher signs off for all six hours that you haven't disturbed, awesome, high five. And we start with something like that. The targets are different for every single student, and that's a lot to keep track of.
How do we keep track of it?
Google Sheets, Google Docs, everything for the kids.
We can show you, we can, we, I can show you, any, any of the last three years, if you name a student, I can tell you what day I saw that student, why I saw that student, how long they were there, what teacher sent them, what infraction was, right? Like, whether the teacher sent them, they came on their, I, I, it just, for check-in, check-out, we could go back to any given day on the, uh, school calendar last year, and I can tell you exactly what the kid did for them. So it's a very data-driven thing that we're doing, and, and that data is, is proving to be very effective in our plan for how we.
I believe you actually insured it with Mr. Dargy, and he came in to talk.
Yeah, we visited several times. I was very impressed, yeah.
Have these students have? No, I just wanna be sure that you guys get your presentation in, so, okay, so we can continue to ask questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
And we want a hundred times to get a few more presentations. Sorry. No, that's, I, I just wanna make sure, like, just trying to make sure we're kind of.
Well, why don't we go around, do our last questions, and then that way Ken holds out whatever he's.
Hold on, I just wanted to know how this position eliminated, or draws down the number of tier-two and tier-three frequent flyers. How, how does it reduce, how is it any different, other than dealing with, we get to now do the discipline, the kind of the gist and set of all the rules, so, how do we stop those kids?
Well, I think if we could answer that question, we'd.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm, I mean.
Yeah, right, so.
Is there a systematic problem that we have where discipline isn't strict enough? I, I don't know.
I think we're a little bit behind.
As of today?
Um, of course, I think there's a lot of factors. I mean, I, I heard someone said, you know, like I said, saying that COVID, because of COVID this happened, I heard someone put it out that COVID exposed a lot of the flaws. It's not because of it, but it exposed some flaws, and I think, we're, at one point, I think we're a little bit behind with this, with our discipline. You know, it was in-school suspension, and that was it. And there wasn't much in the middle. By the time the kid got to me, you were either going home or going to get me in school. And that really didn't work. I mean, I was, I meant, a, a line I had already, um, and a lot of the same.
So you just don't have the same numbers of discipline law.
No, 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 no.
Drop, dramatic, drop, dramatic.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
To you.
And, no, no, the whole building, I tried to pull our data from, um, before, three, four years ago, and.
Really tragic, we have enough to ask for.
Yeah, we, we.
Down, and, you know.
Yeah.
Significantly.
Yeah.
This year there was a bump because you guys were attacking cell phones.
Yeah, correct. Cell phones was a big one.
You pulled cell phones out.
Stupid numbers, terrible. It was. And Bruce, you made the, you know, the nail that, the nail that happened, you said it a lot of.
Right.
Different parent.
It's a different parent, and I, and I think we're starting to see the parents that actually grew up on cell phones. Depending, that young area, it's different. I think the phone problem, it's just the respect isn't there that it used to be.
No, I, I remember my son in the sixth grade saying, I need a cell phone, in case something happens, and I need to get a hold of you, Mom. My mom's in Moser, you can walk upstairs.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, it's very.
So, my last question, too, with the discipline, and just if you, at the end, being full point, other duties at this job, you know, additional position, and you can go through the other questions, we can get over.
That's your time?
One question, but you've got a lot coming on this, um, I guess, like, with financial people being, maybe the, the, the.
Yeah, we can report all the.
We might, if, uh, if you're interested, make sure we, we could, I, I.
What happened? Are these students tested more frequently than other students to see, you know, are they meeting the target, are they, uh, you know, advancing? I mean, it's a long time between an NWEA at the beginning of the year, and then in January. It's, it's a long period of time.
And, yeah.
And I know there's another test in the spring, right?
Sure, right.
So, are there?
We do the, we do the standard tests. We do the, yeah, we do the standard test for assessments in, in the fall, winter, and spring. But again, depending upon what the target and what the goal is for that individual that's in a tier-two or a tier-three, their assessments are gonna be, I mean, it could be different, anything from daily to weekly, and it just is based upon what their targets are, or what they're trying to improve on. Some of them, they have great grades, it's just they're the class clown. And, and so it's, it's, you know, just trying to not disrupt them. Not, not trying to not disrupt the class, you know? Um, and, I mean, look, it's, it's, as small as that may be, but that's the target for them. And, and we had great success where, I, I will be honest, we, one of our most hardened, um, detractors of the program from the, from the start, uh, in the very last, was working, had been working with a student all year, and at the end, she came out and she sent it to the whole staff saying, I was wrong. This worked, and this was the kid, and everybody knew who the kid was, I should try to, but, um, but sent it out to the whole staff and saying, it worked, this kid changed a hundred eighty degrees in my class, and, and for the, for the benefit of the, you know. So, again, it, the target is different for each child.
And I understand rationale, but pioneering NWEA is an assessment tool, but what if there's just, I mean, a gap in, in the kids' knowledge base, and I know we're correcting that or, or addressing that by keeping the children in school, and suspending them?
Right. And, and that's what our wraparound meetings are for, and so we get to the point where we're looking at going from tier-two to a tier-three, we have those called wraparound meetings, where you've got the counselor, uh, multiple teachers, the parents, and ourselves in there to discuss what's going on with the student and how we're gonna help. And, and at that point, it is very intensive as to what we're looking at to try to do with both of your students.
And again, that's almost kind of, should I pick that up?
Yeah.
Yeah. Parent, teacher, student, us.
This is for you.
Um, I don't have a question, I would just like to commend Mr. Ryer. I did not receive any complaints about this proposal. I received, uh, probably six or seven letters of support for the work that you're doing, so thank you for that.
This is. Just a quick little point of, for clarification for me, if we could go back to the one-third, one-third, one-third.
Sure.
One-third teachers won't use it. Do you find that you receive students into the office that bypass Ken, or does anything that happens in the classroom go to Ken?
No, there's quite a few probably bypass everything.
So, is that tracked, so that we can make sure the MTSS program is gonna be successful? So, if you're saying that here's these repeated ten kids, or whomever, that directly are getting sent to you, are we looking at what teachers' classrooms did they come from to find out which third they fallen, so that we can have an intervention for the third if we're finding that it's like, oh, it's coming from?
We, we, yes, we have that information, yeah. It's not something that we post because teachers get very upset with their name being out there, so we go, in our monthly meetings, at our staff meetings, when we talk about, you know, previous month, we learn from our mistakes, and, you know, when we first did it, we had the teachers listed who were using P, you know, PRC and all that type of stuff, that was a bad staff meeting. Um, and, uh, because teachers didn't like their names out there. And, uh, we just wondered if they, for multiple different reasons, one, that they were actually using it, or two, that it showed that they might be the highest of, they were, they were the ones that were sending the most students out for it. And so, um, but what we've done with that is, we don't present that information anymore to the staff, we individually take a look at it, and then we go and have a conversation with that teacher, saying, this is what we're seeing, how can we help you? If this is a continued issue with all these students in your class, how can we help you to make sure that's no longer an issue?
And then, I've just heard conflicting answers. Is this an administrative position or not an administrative position?
How would you label this, sir?
Not really, yeah.
Not, yeah, I mean, that's, I, we don't think, and, and I think that's where the theme of students, uh, uh, proposed title is, is what may be causing some, some issues with that.
Certainly, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm so glad that you're here this evening. Like, I heard if you two gentlemen were absent, then he may be in charge of the building, which, that would be one of it, so that's why I'm thankful.
We get a concept.
Right, so that's why I'm thankful you came in, in person, to, you know, to this proposal, suggested proposal with us. And then, just one last thing of clarity, um, you know, from my experience with students in the district, I mean, I've had, I've heard teachers, don't worry about their fall test, like, you're gonna get into the school year and it's just spring one, you know, spring one matters, so don't, you know, I've heard, you know, don't, don't worry so much about that. So when you're saying that you're seeing improvements, like, don't kids generally trend improving from fall to spring?
Most do.
Most do, so.
So.
Right, yes, so are you saying that, like, this is what I'm just looking for clarity, when you're talking about improvement in these scores, is it improvement, I'm assuming, you, you were saying most do, there's probably a cluster of students that just ride the rail?
Right.
So are you, are these students, they usually just sort of, and you're seeing an improvement?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so for me, I don't really have any questions besides the fact, I think you all just called me old, because I did not have a cell phone growing up, so, I think we're old parents, I think that's where we're good at now. Cool, we're good. Right? Um, but I'm, I, uh, like the fact that you came up with different ideas aside necessarily, you were saying, like, the theme of students, if that's a topic, student advocate is another idea. Um, to me, the title is not necessarily important, it's what falls below that title. So I appreciate you guys coming in and letting us know. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right.
You had it behind you, yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Tom. Oh, yeah, that's right.
Question. Do these, that, it's not an administrative duty, you know, the other duty that may be assigned, and just, you know, I guess, you know, Tom isn't on that, that you can't figure out other duties.
Correct.
Right, yeah, because I thought I saw something, again, I read that probably, I don't know, something with the other group department as well?
That's, we took that, we took that out.
Okay. Took that and then the latest?
Yes.
Yeah, we sent it to K F D.
Yeah. That might go. Yeah, that was, okay, I can't say. And if there's nothing.
We updated it.
This year, five people?
Yeah, that's, that's the.
The duties at the top. Okay, sorry. Okay, and then Mike, you guys have questions?
That's lovely.
We've heard about all of them.
Okay.
All right, I appreciate you gentlemen so much. Thank you so much. All right, how is tonight? This takes us to the elementary math coach proposal. Back to Mr. Breyer.
I like this way of, obviously, I'll make the table. Uh, you have brought the math book. We need to switch out the presentation.
You, uh, Steve, the top, you're the second tab on the top.
See it. There you go, buddy. Because most folks talk so much, we have.
That's all we get. The rest goes to Mary. Hope this one is good.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for allowing us to come in tonight and talk about our math coach proposal here. We think it's a good one. And, uh, you know, as you know, we've got a reading coach in our many buildings. Forty years now, something like that? Three years, okay. And, uh, it's really, uh, done a lot in the building. They, uh, they evolved terribly in attention in the building. Uh, our, our M step scores, which, uh, are not shareable yet, really showed a marked bump this year. Uh, it's compared to past year, which was, um, you need COVID still. Uh, so, you know, it is our opinion that the literacy coach position is working very well. And since we are going into the program, uh, we wanted to visit the math coach proposal as well. Uh, so I found this and I just want to stress the importance of teaching math toward kids. So that if they only wanted to have it at home, if they understand it right, so.
That kid deserves an A.
Yeah, so it really shows that the high levels of math is important.
Needs P D I S.
Yeah, he gets, uh, going over there to be, so there you go. All right, so the official proposal is, uh, the creation of three new positions, uh, as elementary mathematics, instructional coaches with one station at each of our elementary schools. And in addition to that, uh, the creation of two additional math paraprofessionals to each elementary building to work together with the math coach as a team. Uh, the math coach, um, primarily, we have the responsibility, they're, they'll be working with the teaching staff. And then the paraprofessionals working under the math coach will primarily be in charge of interventions, uh, doing any product monitoring, uh, you know, wedge and timer, that sort of thing. So that's kind of the. All right, and so for rationale, uh, M step and N W E A data indicates that student proficiency is lower than expected, uh, significantly more so since the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, math scores in M step and N W A is significantly lower than D L A scores in the same system. So we're, we're seeing gains in D L A, but we're not seeing equal gains in math. All right, uh, so I went to my school data and pulled up this math trend data for the M step. Now, this only goes to the pandemic year last year. I wish I could include, uh, this year because, uh, the, the scores have gone up. You can see a little line is kind of old a little bit there. But, you know, looking at these scores and I could not remove, um, like six, seven, eight from this. It just got too visually confusing, so I just left it all on there. But generally speaking, you know, as a, as a district here, we're, we're kind of hovering that, that forty percent line. And I can see some bumps after we initially adopted the math focus program. There's some bumps down here, there's some, uh, lowering the scores over there. But overall, we're still hovering that forty percent, uh, range for math during that program time. And then, uh, the COVID nineteen epidemic had, and had some low that also includes a top out. So it's somewhat skewed data there.
Oh, and you said you had six, seven and eight grade in there, correct?
Yes.
Well, even with that, I mean, the potential would be that this helps those students. So when they do get to six, seven, you know, it's pretty easy.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So it made sense to leave it there.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, overall, what happens here first, that and their next.
Right.
You know, kind of, and so if we're lower down there, it's going to, you know, continue that pandemic trend that we see. And then just for the third, fourth, fifth grade, this is, uh, last year's, again, pandemic, uh, M step, which we had a lot of hopped outs. Our math scores in third, fourth, fifth grade were all over forty percent. And, and another reason why we wanted to look at a different program as well. M step has not been, uh, very gracious with math. And I also pulled, uh, N W E scores, uh, for all three buildings. And these are, these are the various bands. So, uh, the forty first to sixty percentile, we're, we're kind of in that middle range, that average range for students there. And then you go below there, uh, where it's at a kind of a low grade level now. And then you have your, uh, angry level or bulk grade level. We want some more of that, uh, that tan in the red to move over there. And although our, our N W E scores, uh, went up in math, it didn't go up as much as they did in, um, D L A. You know, in my building and we looked at the other buildings too, we had, uh, some teachers that had eighty to ninety plus percent of their kids. Um, neither Ritz nor Gold this year in D L A. Uh, we did not see those similar numbers in math. So we know that we want to, uh, trend there, we want to get there in math, but we're not there. You know, we have a new program coming in and, uh, we have a lot of work to do with that. Uh, this is the Benny scores.
No, I think that, you know, it's a little bit confusing to look at, you know, kind of from far away from the screen. But what we're basically looking for is that the yellow, green and blue mats are over half of the scores. You know, we want that to represent more of the scores than not. Because they would be above the forty first percentile. And the reason that they're colored put it that way is because that yellow green is considered average by the standards of N W E A. So we want the red and the orange ours to be smaller than what the yellow green are.
What's happening in second grade?
They did a great job in the third grade.
Yes, they did. And, uh, in, in general, too, you can see kind of a trend where the lower grades are somewhat higher in their math goal. We can, and, and, you know, the grades, uh, they could add.
I was going to say, there seems to be a pretty steep ground call between sixth and the third. So I thought we had them there.
Yeah, they, specific, specific to that group, that was a focus as other teams, they really were focused on that, as in my building.
And, and, and that's the problem with math, right? I mean, we don't really know everything about what, you know, what is for the, you know, is it the program? You know, is the program being, uh, you know, followed with fidelity across the board? Different materials? Is it, uh, you know, the, the different groups that are going through? Is it the questions on the M step? There's really a, a lot of things to be able to look at. Uh, so that's why we look at it in the program, that we have a program coming in. We want to also be able to support teachers implementing that program. But beyond just implementing the program and, and the script that's in the program, we want them to have additional strategies and understand how to better communicate with their students. And there's some data. I'm going to take a stretch of talking.
I got poisoned. I think our kindergarten piece, he hasn't paid those before. Um, it's a three times a day, and then he sat up there and then they literally raised him, and he turned off. I definitely wanted to see him, you know, grow. So he got the bat.
Yeah, and as the upper grades kind of go down there, that also, you know, M steps.
But everybody was using the same math program, right? Over, we can't speak to the fidelity of the management here.
So, uh, moving on, just to some additional points, yes, Steve kind of mentioned, the district has adopted a new math series, big active math, which now will provide a G twelve awareness in mathematics. So that's something that we haven't had before and we're really excited about that. And we believe that the support for the teaching staff is going to be critical and that a coach can fulfill that role by helping teachers to really implement that from day one to make sure that everybody is following that program as it's designed to be, providing additional professional, professional development opportunity, working together. Um, and in addition to just doing that, which would be considered tier one, something that everybody is getting, the math coach could also provide guidance and support for teachers with interactive touch. So that is what is considered a tier two and tier three support. So layers that work on top of what they will be getting through their big ideas now, which is what everyone is getting. And, um, small group interventions are research-based strategy.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, so say you have Mrs. La, who's teaching math at second grade. And, sorry, Mrs. La. Um, and she's struggling, right? And you can tell due to the numbers, right? Um, would the idea be that this math coach then, like you as a principal would notice that you would then send this math coach to Mrs. La so they could work together to improve Mrs. La's numbers?
Yeah, that could be one approach. So there could be like a directed approach. There can also be, like, where teachers will request support, like, I know that I need support or believe that I need support in this way and, you know, can you come and help? Um, we had some, some additional coaching this past year for phonics strategy. And so sometimes those coaches taught something and the teacher watched and then they debriefed. Sometimes the coach watched what the teacher did and then they debriefed and said, here's some feedback. Um, sometimes they both, you know, then grouped together where they were kind of working interactively. So it can be all of those things.
Thank you so much.
I had a teacher that she, I asked for group, coach, she said, well, it's in the L A. We have our three coach, M, uh, Coach Five, Four, and the ones that hit, if we got them, I would send them to students.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, and then one more way you asked, sorry, I'm, I'm sorry. Dr. James, a question. I spoke with a administrator from another school today. He has math coaches where he loves them. They also explained to me that there's different models, like several models. So we talked about just now, you could go to this teacher if they're asking, maybe the scores are down. Do we have a uniform model that we're going to be working off of that? This math coach works with every teacher in the building as part of a plan and not just when they need it. Or is there a model? Are we still developing?
We have not yet. So I'm on that. That's not to say that that could be developed.
I think they work with everybody, you know, the officers and communities, they do participate in those things. Um, right now, at least one, she's like, oh, so true. We'll see if teachers are chuggling with the data. But they requested that support a lot. But I do think they fit, they touch all the teachers in the sense of they work with teams on their data basis.
Well, like Mrs. A, right? This is Mrs. A for you. So, I mean, she even helps with testing, right? So she does work with every teacher because she's seen everyone's mind.
Right, in, in addition to, uh, going back to your question, another way that, you know, involves a math coach is, uh, in our D V meetings. Uh, right now, our D V meetings are, uh, highly literacy focused, you know, but having that math coach on and bringing that math data along with those, uh, the literacy data will be the plan. And then also through those meetings, then we would identify any things that need to, you know, be picked up or if there's any D V or, you know, whatever it is, looking at data, uh, that will help us now, you know, kind of see that. And those are monkey.
Okay, so since you're talking about the data, again, the N W E A is only given three times a year. And there's the expanded time between. Are there discussions centered around perhaps common assessments at this point? So that interventions can be more immediate and ongoing? I mean, that's way too long of a span of time. Can't, you know, easily wait between N W E A assessments.
With a coach, I would venture a guess that we're going to start to employ prior monitoring assessments with our edu climate program, um, that we use in D L A. So in D L A, students, all students get, all tier two students get prior monitor after two weeks. And so to your point, that'd be probably the most likely thing that we would do is ensure that the interventions that we're doing do work and prior monitor them after two weeks to see like, okay, did they get their number identification? Did they get their evaluation follow-up process? So that not we, um, you know, flawed it to do in N W E A.
Well, and as the data show, there's big differences between grade levels. And I don't know, you know, why they aren't occurred. But one of the things that came up in other meetings was, you know, the idea of common assessments. I'm sure everybody's kind of on this, um, track, on pace, um, on target.
I mean, we should have common assessments currently. That's been a big focus of things. Um, some of our teacher teams even have their assessments uploaded at us.
The new series has.
Yeah, the new series.
More frequent assessment than the, the previous series were using it. So I think that will kind of naturally occur. And it is top of mind and it's something that's a focus then, obviously. But I think also naturally as part of the implementation of the new series, that would correct.
Isn't a portion of the day at elementary level dedicated to math instruction? An hour a day? And how much is given to literacy? And we need some examples.
Well, excuse me, we could love that.
Oh, we'd love that.
Mrs. Warner, are you suggesting we extend the day by a half hour?
And dog.
Sorry, Mrs. Warner. Sorry, Mrs. Warner.
Scratch that one. No, that's a totally, I am not. Left, right, or left.
I'm trying to get that out there.
So this is just another wing effect that John Kelly, which, um, he has done a lot of research in, in terms of effect size on what are strategies? What are things that have the biggest effect size on student achievement? And you can see collective teacher efficacy, I know it's very small, but that is a one point five seven. That's a huge effect size. And by having coaches who are working with teachers collectively in groups to build their professional practice, that is something that we know indirectly impacts kids in a really positive way. So although the coaches are working with the adults, the adults are impacting a lot of children at the same time.
And as Steve stated earlier, you know, schools are obviously, they've had, they've had coaches for years. We're, you know, we're just now, you know, breaking into that coaching model we did with our D L A. They were stated earlier, you know, even the M T S S process has been with other districts for ten plus years. We're just now, without a reason, getting into these things. So, so there is some catch up. But again, looking at what our neighbors have done, look at their scores. We talked to the board about scores and what we do, especially at high level, how we do this. So then we start having our discussion with the admin team of, you know, what do we need as a person, as a coach? We need to bring in, we need, we need, we need help in these areas. So when you see those literacy scores jump up like we have, it's a good challenge. So now, now we're excited to present the idea of math.
Okay, um, thanks, Mike. Um, so this side is just about what is kind of currently happening to, just to sort of give you an update. So right now, the school improvement teams are analyzing M step and the N W E A data, creating goals and strategies for each building based on that data. As we just discussed, each student, um, in their classroom has a one hour math block as part of their school day. The curriculum is defined and input on that list available to all staff. Um, the thirty one A, which is the state that risk funding and Title One funding is used for before or after school tutoring opportunities. Those are some times that has happened here and there. Um, we have online programs for student support like Adventum, Three Flex Now, Happy Happy, Title One support. So, um, both our North Benny have our Title One buildings. So that just means that the funding comes from a different source. And, um, so in grade three through five, there is some math support given. That's a requirement of Title One. So that's just a little bit different. And in summer school, they also had a math block of forty five minutes as well as using some programs like study evidence and happy numbers. So we do know though, considering all of that, most of our instructional support resources and data discussions, like Steve said, have been literacy focused. Because we have most resources there, we put the most time and energy there. And so that's kind of where we have spent our time gathering the data, discussing it and making decisions. And we would really like to say that we want, we want to be able to expand that because we see the positive impact that that had on literacy over time. Okay, so this was in the proposal, but just to kind of reiterate some of the responsibilities that a math coach would do. So supporting and promoting the learning of students by facilitating the learning of the adults. So again, not to leave it at first, but like Steve said, the coach primarily works with the adults. And in addition to working with the teachers, the coach will then coach and support the parapodes who work directly with the students. So it is kind of that multi-layered, um, support system. So the ways that the coach would facilitate adult learning is planning laboratively with people, co-teaching specifically with big ideas. Um, making sure that our work or flex research-based teaching practices, focusing on access and equity in teaching and learning of math. Um, like we were saying, and, and was being said in the middle school was here, really being a part of that M T S S cycle. So again, when we have these data discussions, so at the elementary level, they have happened monthly with the administrative team and teachers and then four times a year with a bigger district team. And really that has been focused on literacy. So we want to expand that to be able to have that conversation around math. And through that cycle, that's where the cold planning and the co-teaching is born and revised and takes shape. And then using those discussions to make data-driven decisions about teaching both at tier one level for everybody and then at the intervention level. Um, and I already talked about it. Um, okay, and a few more responsibilities. Um, John kind of mentioned this, that we have an additional assessment called Fast Bridge, which we have used in literacy last year. And they have a math component. And what that does is it is a universal assessment. So every student receives that, that, um, assessment in some grades. In some grades, it's like kids who N W E A scores fall below a certain level, they will initially receive this assessment. And then that's what can be used to monitor their progress more frequently. So it's a quicker assessment, it's shorter, it's more targeted on the goals that they're working on. And then that data through this edu planner system, it is feeding directly in. So when we have these conversations about students of the team, we can pull up a graph of their progress and say, wow, they're making this progress. wow, they're making this progress, what's been happening with the team, let's keep it that way. Or while this progress has either stagnated or it really is not progress, it's kind of like all over the place, what's going on? Let's change this thing to be right. Um, as Kathy said, something that a math coach can do is lead a coaching cycle or lessons studied not only for individuals, but also for grade level teams or across grade level teams. Um, collaborating with not only the principal, but also the literacy special, literacy specials to the reading coach to make sure that the professional learning for staff is really aligned and it's meeting the needs of what, what everybody wants. Um, supporting communication with families about what things are going on in math, especially as we roll out this new system, helping families support that, and then serve on school-based leadership teams as you're concerned. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. We'll go around again. We'll do a little round robin again. This time we'll swap it over. Sorry, Laura. This time we're going to swap it over and we'll start with Mrs. McGee.
You may have already answered this. Um, there's been like, I know there was, you know, mention of COVID that year, of course, you know, delayed learning. What was happening between 2014 and 19? It was, it was a steady decline. It wasn't here and we got to COVID and dropped.
Well, 2015, 16 is when we initially had the math focus. That was the first year of implementation. Sort of a tier shaking. Uh, so then, you know, that's your first year. And then hopefully that, you know, years two, three, four, and so on, kind of go up. And, and that's, that's the question, you know, we, we don't really, you know, look at the data, analyze the data, we know what kids are missing. Uh, we turn that around to school improvement plans, uh, we find data through the kids. Uh, but we don't really know, you know, exactly why that program wasn't working out. We've done some research, you know, on best programs out there, Math and Focus kind of came in at the bottom. I don't remember what that sentence was. But at, at any rate, it came in at the bottom in terms of like, hey, this is a good program, you should use that kind of thing. Uh, so that's why our, our minds kind of turns to doing something else until we get that by year mark. That Math and Focus may not be serving the purposes that it needs to serve.
I think we also, um, would say that the energy that we focused in literacy has had a positive impact. But as a result, that's where all the resources were going. You know, so all of the additional resources were really focused in one way. We did that on purpose. You know, and so there was some sacrifice there. I don't, and I don't know that we could put a, an exaction point on it, but it's probably a little one-sided of that.
And I would say like for journeys, you know, there's, there's certainly some scripts or journeys and, you know, things to do with that. You know, just as there is for math, but I think with math, it's more of stick to the script kind of thing. You know, deliver the lesson, then you're going to do what's next, that kind of thing. Or, you know, as you go through the reading, they're going to do the journeys, they're going to do, you know, what was said in this part, that part, whatever journeys. Kind of like pick what is working, uh, but then they're going to go into guided reading groups and they're totally on script. They're totally, you know, doing what, what they know is, uh, you know, needed in that particular group. So there's a lot less scripted, you know, scripted in literacy. So they can really help, you know, expand out there. You have a literacy coach to bring in new strategies and things that they can do. And we just have not had that. So it's been, here's the program, this is what the program is. Here's some, you have other programs that you could also use to help kids, you know, build some foundation skills. But that's kind of what it was, I know it is.
Would you find a correlation in improved reading scores to math scores? Because you need to read to do story problems, you typically see and it's and now they're, everyone is the, sorry, the math book's going to be the big idea.
Yeah, this year's K-12, the entire
Entire district, that's what we approved recently. And, um, the, we just approved that, and I don't remember any practice of like, we're switching. Cause I remember when one of my students went to begin math, I loved it. Like the book was great, the illustrations, the examples, the
I think for math and focus, which we had, it was very stapled and so like, there wasn't enough focus on foundational activities. And so I really do think that with big ideas, if there's an issue, we can see it quicker and catch it, patch that gap, and then move on to the next thing. Where with math and focus, if you missed it on this spiral, you weren't going to get it until you got back down to here. Um, because you were kind of jumping around like you're the topics. And so I think with big ideas, I hope with big ideas, we're going to be able to, to kind of catch it at those internal assessments. We're going to be able to catch it forward assessment. And I hope that with the math coach, that's the direction that we go. There will be, it will be a mirror to our ELA instructional where part of your 16 minutes is a small group instruction. And like we have this supplemental material for whole group and then I'm going to pull my free kit and I know what I need to do. We just need to get teacher tutorials for the, for the math.
So then ideally, what we're hoping is that the math coach then by evaluating can then pinpoint.
And say, yeah.
Because they're just, they're experts focusing specifically.
They're looking at specifically math data, they're doing progress monitoring with math. Like that, that's what their wheelhouse is. And so they're, they're, they're utilizing themselves in that area.
And is there support from?
Um, so
When you purchase books, is it just like, here you go, you're on your own?
We have a lot of PD, um, and we can get coaching. The hardest part for trying to do district level coaching is like, when we need to get subs, we're always canceling PD. It's hard to schedule in the first place. So like something like this where Diane, Sandy, and Beth were not scheduled, they could go on their own, be trained because they have so much flexibility and they'll come back and train the teachers when we have space, when they're on PLCs, all of those things. So that model would be a great model to, to implement in our math program. So we do have PD that we bought with the book. Um, we're going to get a half day of all district training. We have some coaching built in on our backend. But boy, would it be great to have some intense coaching with the three math coaches that happen right back and say, you're struggling in chapter two, here are some resources that you can use. Here's how you can make sure that kid, before you go on to chapter three, have an understanding of it.
Um, also in the recent proposal, there's, um, an idea that the new math coach would attend a coaching series at RISA, which is specifically related to math.
Yeah.
Well, I, I have it written right here. My next question is coached versus leading RISA resources. Like it, it, it seems like we don't know, but have we exhausted all our other resources?
So ELA coach attends RISA training and then the other two go with her on occasion. All coaches coach onsite, I think is what it is, what we get made version of RISA. That's been a very successful program with Diane. Um, and so the hope is that the math coaches can, can follow that similar playbook. Um, similar to our situation, RISA's put a lot of money into PLA coaches. And so their support for math is nowhere near as robust as it is for ELA. And so we're, it's not exactly you're on your own, but, but it's not like there isn't a deep kind of, of math coaches that we can use that way in RISA to, to bring it into our district.
Okay, can I add that? Cause I don't think that coaching is tough in the sense of you've got some trust with the students. You're pulling some in, and RISA, we have to work with staff on daily basis. It sometimes can get a little defensive and the teacher will, he, that they're being carried in. Or as I look at my current coaches around the building, they build those relationships probably long and so therefore it makes it easier for the woman to say, I'm going to try that, so I'm going to go teaching this on this concept.
And just last thing, how do you envision what the first year looks like with the coach? There, how do you see that transition? What does it look like? Um, I'm just to make, to make sure I understand your question. So differently from what we described here, is it, is it the same across the three buildings? Will you, like, what have you discussed as far as if this proposal passes? How, what's, what's happening going forward? How does that look? What were your coach feeling? I mean, I see the responsibility. How do you see that, that playing out?
Well, I think we have to give a gen, you know, first, we have to figure out what big ideas have to offer. We have to see what RISA has to offer. We have to recruit these people out to speak and hear what they're doing, and then, you know, with the staff and, you know. And, uh, interviewing first, that's the first step. And actually finding someone that, you know, whose math deserves a house kind of thing. But then beyond that, then we have to build their knowledge base, their capacity in order to be able to pull out, you know, in effect, you know, the adults and building.
Or their professional, you know, they all have to trade their parent professionals, be a part of the existing data dialogues, um, to, so that they know how that process would work and what, what part they would play in that. You know, so some of, some of the learning will, will be in the moment, you know, as it's going along, there will be learning. And that's the benefit of having literacy coaches, reading coaches, is that we do kind of want the math coach model to look very similar to that.
So I didn't, sorry, I didn't ask you that to put it on the spot. I, I think I asked it so it could be recognized as the first year will be growth. They, they have to get acclimated to a building. They have to learn to know the staff, correct? They have to, all of these things that are involved with being a coach. So that if it's springtime and when, when he's doing his presentation, we're not seeing some drastic jump, it will have already been recognized that it's a growth process. That a coach isn't going to just come in and a miracle is going to happen. And then it's going to take time so that, you know, the feedback from maybe the community, what, you approved all this money, nine staff members, this work group, you know? It's going to take time and that's why I asked. And that's very common.
Yeah, it will not be.
Right.
Like you can always hope.
Hope is not a strategy.
But what, what we also have to think realistically, that it's a process. If someone just doesn't hit the ground running, understanding how a building was designed, everything that's involved, they don't
You know, with data, you know, and there, there's going to be a learning curve. So, you know, whatever you're implementing, you know, first year, there, there's that learning curve of, you know, how do you do this? So, hey, now we're on chapter two, you figure out how to teach chapter two. You know, so hopefully, coaches can come in and kind of offer some of that and, you know, help us some of that learning curve initially. But yeah, getting acclimated to the building, uh, getting into the data of the building, you know, kind of looking at where it'll be ended by spring. And, uh, you know, which kind of scores are going to be coming out too as well. Uh, figuring out, getting into classrooms, seeing the different teaching styles. Because, you know, as you saw, there were blips, I mean, right? You know, second grade here, kindergarten there, you know, there were some blips where math was, uh, much higher. So different things are going on, different grades, different teachers, different things. You know, so getting kind of used to all of that and building trust as like a big key and component of all this. It needs to dumb trust who's in there, they won't buy it. So building trust over the course of a year.
Thank you.
Mrs. McGee.
No questions.
Mrs. McGee.
Okay, um, first thing I'd like to address is this Fast Bridge assessment. And we've done any kind of, do we know how it correlates with N W E A and our MSETF? And how we do with literacy, do we know with the math?
So Fast Bridge is so much shorter. Matt, you guys might know, but is it a two-minute assessment or a five-minute assessment?
It is, uh, it's a five-minute assessment.
Yeah.
Um, and it is, you know, I, I don't know off the top of my head in terms of correlations with N W E A or anything like that, but it does focus on specific skill.
Yeah.
Um, so it will give the coach and the parapros an idea of what exactly needs to be addressed at any given time with any given student.
So if you look at, like, N W E A has six main components to it that it tests in math. So whatever operations, algebraic things, all of that. Like Fast Bridge will look at and say like, single-digit addition. And it will give a five-minute diagnostic. And then the next time they take it, it will give a six-five minute diagnostic and we'll see how the kid did on addition. And then it moves on to the next skill. So there's like, I don't know how many skills. So while it's very loosely correlated, really it's much more skill-based than it is standard-based. It's the, um, you know, world.
So basic skills that is focused, build into the major, like, do you want?
Yeah, basic skills depending on what you're actually testing. But like on some of the tasks, like there's only one way to, you know, convolve my fractions, so like that.
There's never justice.
Well, I think the thing that the students wouldn't be utilizing the Fast Bridge, they were permissioned on the other assessments. So it's really, you know, it's building from the bottom. So one thing after this Billy plot skill, then it moves on to the next skill, then it moves on to the next skill. It gives guidance to the parapros who are working with the students, you know, and the team who's analyzing that data to say, this student is doing well on this concept, here's the next thing, here's a strategy we can give to teach.
All right, so the lit cultures, and that's, that's what I'm hearing, that's the same thing as the meeting specialist.
Yes.
Right, and there's one per building.
Yes.
Are there any parapros associated with the fast?
So like, they need a six.
Six parapros?
Yeah, so. Directly assigned to lit, though?
Well, like, because we're a Title I building, we do have some, at least one who spends part of the time doing this requirement. But the majority of the time was under literacy.
I think so.
Four to five hours a day.
So these paras then are pushed in to the classroom, so they work with the students. So the teachers are used to working with paras. Kids are getting used to working with paras and that.
Yeah.
Right, um, is there any special background that's required for the paras?
Um, I think the ones that we have in literacy had to have like four kids or, you know, there were, um, parapo type criteria and then we did interviews, you know, to ask.
Because so many jobs do, have you ever heard it, like, say, you know, I really love traction.
There are people who have a passion for men that you wouldn't believe about their art.
I, I'm one of them.
Yeah.
But I don't
We did it to the other.
Across the board, you know, and so I think we have to be a little bit cautious there, right? We don't want to, you know, reject any of that kind of thing. Um, I hope we determine that three cultures are really necessary. I mean, looking at the science proposal, I'm seeing one. And, you know, seeing three math cultures. So are three necessary? Would we do it with two?
I guess this is what we would say.
With the middle school classes, because like, there's math. I understand there's math specialists, right, in middle school, but there are a lot of them across the middle school system.
I think what's just, is your question definitely, I think that would be the best. Could there be steps down from that? Sure, and then that, just like anything else, then that, then the impact would, would likely potentially be reduced by however much that is. You know, do we, could we quantify that right now? No, we, we, we can't say, but we believe that that would, that one really matters.
I mean, the rationale is, is solid, especially with the new math program. I mean, you know, and it is a, a big area to tackle and it affects science and everything else too. So, you know, I get it from the app perspective, but it's, it's just a question. And followed up with what happens when the funding staff?
Yeah, I mean, so because of their elementary position, these coaches could be a sort of root attrition. So like every year, we can know that we have a, an online teacher, or two. So we could start to transition out of that when 31A, 30, 31A, when it's deployed. I don't know. Um, 31A runs, runs out or is, is lowered. Um, the way 31A's been going, you know, it's, they were, were up probably eight hundred thousand dollars since when, like, the TIP locked in a little.
So this is, these positions will be offered to current existing staffers, right? And open for in-house bidding and then if not, then it goes the end, right?
So I think we can quantify the math, but I think we can quantify the reading. And I think that was part of why this century, we saw the progress over the last four, five years.
Yes, and I, and I get that, and I understand that, that it sounds like the teachers are, I mean, it's a part of their daily life, right? And the students as well. And so then to have this additional support for math. The data definitely shows that we need it right now at least. Um, so as a former union president, I have to ask, if teachers take these coaching positions and they should disappear, what happens?
Do you go back into the
Based on their current superiority, their, all the goals go away, right?
They're still considered teaching, like in a, as a teacher or a teaching.
But they wouldn't have a, um, classroom assignment necessarily, it's just jibby up. Is that what you do with the meeting? Do you now in the buildings, I mean, you split your time between grade levels?
Right, right.
And rotate through and then focus on those most in need with the paras?
Right.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGee.
Um, I don't have a question so much as a
Um, I don't think it's a question so much as a sort of statement, maybe a little bit of a warning. Um, maybe more as a term. Um, I love assessment. I'm a huge fan of assessment. Um, they help us know what we're doing well, it helps us know what we need to put resources, it helps us try to figure out what we're giving, how we can kind of move everybody forward. Um, I hate standardized testing as a high leverage, as a hammer to it, because they get rid of us in bad directions. So we end up trying to track down, we're gonna improve math, we're gonna improve D L A. I'm worried that we lose track, siloed, we lose track of trying to improve schools so the kids get a, an integrated approach, like, some kind of a problem-based, a place-based, a project-based model where we we realize that math is really a skill that gets used in the scientific endeavor. It's a, it's a nimbleness of mind that we've got with that. And I think the same thing for D L A, that I hate two-hour E L A blocks. Can't stand them, but we do them all the time. We call them three-hour D L A blocks. It's brutal. We do two-hour math blocks. I hate blocks. I hate this whole idea that we're gonna stop reading math, we're gonna stop reading D L A, we're gonna stop reading science. So it's not so much, so I love this idea of coaching, I'm a huge coaching fan. So I'm not, I I love the goal, I'm a big fan of all that. Whether we can afford it, I don't know. And I had a super friend once who said, we can afford anything, we just gotta afford it. So I, so I, I don't know. But, so I mean, I love the idea of the proposal. Mine, I don't know, my concern is that we we are dangerously close to siloing a lot of places. And I I like to see this kind of beginning to think about, how do we, how do we use these coaching models to maybe to change a little bit so that you're not a D L A coach, or a math coach, or a science coach, which are kind of a, a learning coach who specializes in math, but also supports that integration into the scientific world or into the historical piece so that we're leading without any scientific.
Yeah, so not so many questions, just comments. A good friend of mine is a math coach, works in the same building as administrator of score by math. He's all for him, obviously, but one of the questions that we touched on, and the one we touched on was coaching the coach. He went through a year of being trained before being a math coach. So timing is a concern, right? Jumping in, if we have to hire from within, we take three math coaches from the middle school. We lost three already right here. So we lost the C S O X, and we lost Tracy Jem. So we've got three there, let's say those three come to the math coaches. We're we're two weeks, two weeks away from the start of school. Are we gonna be able to get math teachers?
I think the priority would be like our tier-one students first, and then as that happens, then they can transition into coaching. What would be the system?
Who's gonna be tier-one students?
Like, everyone has this big pulling, carefully out of the math classroom and saying, like, you're going to coach, we're gonna throw stuff in the middle school.
Well, they have to apply to whoever's.
Right, but I, but I'm saying, like, if he applied for it, he would stay in as a middle school teacher until we found this replacement and then transition into a coach. So kids, I don't think we can just pull teachers out of classrooms and start with stuff on their.
Does the new public act help students there? If you retired prior to that date, two weeks ago, and you had your, you saw a month of retirement, and your grandfather did that month, you have to do that.
I know you moved, but what?
I mean, they might be very much.
Right, you're wrong.
Did you open that door?
So not third month, you're out for nine months.
I think your grandfather, he got four days' pass.
Nine months.
We have a few nine months.
So that that's a good start.
There's, there's math game.
And it's like, yeah, it's still a year.
So that was just a concern, switching to teachers. So that's, Laura touched on it. And I, a little bit, we have a great idea, I'm all for it, but we don't have a lot to like, jumping into the game a little bit like you. It is what it is, I guess, you know? So the first year's gonna be a tough year, you know?
It would have lost the D L A.
Yeah, so, and then I'm just concerned with how Title I works in the funding of this. If, like, friends use a math coach, it's paid for by Title I, so is that an option here? Like, for all the math.
It.
Oh, it's a good one.
Correct. Ah, that's, it's, so.
Private and thirty-one A.
Thirty, thirty-one A, yes. Title. Title would be hard because this is like, we're kind of taking, we're taking board action all at once for all three, and since London is not psychocraft. A title building, you could look at it as supplanting the other two with title funds. They're just using general funds. Because of the way we went about the rating coaches, that's not really concerned. Kathy Gorski and then Sandy Arben were the only two title-funded, and then Chupi. Um, I'm sorry, uh, Chupi, however it worked out. However it worked out, we've only title-funded two buildings. Um, and then years later, we added a third one, so we're okay there. Like, it would get dicey if instead we're going to fund these two after title one or this one.
So we don't, at this point, don't know.
Well, we had thirty-one A.
We'll find out. Yeah, sure.
Okay, yes. So my my buddy is a five-to-eight coach. They have in their district of the one to four, just about the same amount of students. I have a kid between, well, that's just the middle school, I guess, but he's got about nine hundred. He's saying, obviously, the elementary needs it the most, but it does seem to need four in the middle school as well. So that's the point. I mean, I guess if there's any way to leverage this to the middle school teachers. But then he also said there's that trust factor because they're math teachers, right? So if you went to Phil C S O X and said, hey, Phil, you need to do this. I don't know if Phil would accept that, you know? He's he's very good, he might, you know, or whoever, you know? Just just food for thought there, but it's. But he does say, he did say, he did see a need for it in the middle school as well, but just not as much. Maybe something to expand on the middle school.
Uh, so you want four? Right, right, that's better. I heard four.
Three is fine, but we wanna keep. But he also said, to the point too, that it's very important that, through the three schools, that they all collaborate.
Yeah.
So, you know, weekly meetings, dating, whatever the meetings are, we had kind of touched on them. Maybe, maybe not, maybe, see how it goes, but that was, that's critical of collaboration there across all three schools.
Um, I know that we're running short on time. I just wanted to say, I appreciate you guys so very much. Obviously, I'm here about cost and sustainability, when we get to that, um, finding new employees, like, um, how Mrs. Luthy stated as well, so I definitely wanna see that. Um, I love the fact that you guys said an D L A coach increased, um, after about four years to eighty percent. To us, that's huge. So, like, we were talking about, you know, it's not gonna happen in a day, but in four years, if we could see that with math, I mean, that, I mean, obviously, that's amazing. Um, I also like the fact where you said the two-week assessments, noticing these kids who are struggling. I also think you can notice it for the kids who are very high and not getting that, not getting that extra push. Right? So, um, I find that to be amazing too. Um, and then also, let's not just hire energy, but obviously, one with math specialty. Um, and then I love the fact that Mr. Klein said, um, going into science and history with D L A too. I can test.
You guys can.
Yep, okay, sorry, I just wanted to touch those.
No, good. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. So, Mary, I swear we're gonna give you your time, girl. You need to take a break. All right, we're going.
Well, this is all about instructional.
Right, so. And as a pandemic item, I will now say, that takes us to the instructional science code proposal, and so.
Thanks, Mary. You're up.
All right. Okay, so I know, um, I've heard those of you who don't know me, I'm a junior master. I teach high school chemistry. I did, oh, sorry, my twenty-sixth year. Pretty sure I taught many of your children and worked with you and have grown with you, so I really do, I very feel your team. Um, so I wanna start with some thank yous, and I know those usually go at the end, but I wanted you guys to see that this wasn't just a proposal coming from a high school chemistry teacher, that I included, um, the ideas and the opinions and the knowledge base of a lot of different people, um, including elementary, middle school, high school, uh, Mafone Science, I S D. Uh, Tanya McCranes-First is a, um, science curriculum coordinator for Camden there in Mitchell Middle School. She actually runs the, um, the coaching over there at the high school, so she was a great resource. And then Andrew Brook is a summer instructional coach at Lake Orient, who I used her model to build my model off of. So I was really trying to gather as much information as I could. Um, and the idea for this came from the fact, well, this is a dream job for me. I've wanted to do it for a long time. I've done a lot of work in region, in county, and a little bit in the state. And as you guys said, the coaching model's been around a long time. As I moved out from Mount Park, I've always been these other, um, districts and working with these people. I know they've been doing it, and so, um, with an influx of, uh, absorbing the teachers from the community school, we haven't had some extra space in our schedule of the high school. So this was the time out, right? Iron is hot, right? Um, this would not be an added position. It would be me teaching a few hours in the morning and then doing this sort of in the afternoon. Um, so the scores, we've talked about all the reasons why the scores are bad, including the pandemic, but also that these science scores are gonna look like this throughout, um, our region, our area, the state. This is nothing new, and a lot of it is, um, from what we were hearing, the push for literacy, the push for math. Those are really, really important things. Um, however, it's time, the K-12 science community will tell you, it's time to bring science back into our collective, um, gate all the way through the 12th grade. So, um, we heard a lot about instructional coaches already, so I won't belabor the point, but I love this bracket because it really goes through the different, um, steps of the different pieces of what an instructional coach would do, whether it's math, literacy, science. Um, it really is job embedded professional development. So when we gather our teachers at the high school in media center and G P D, it's effective in some areas. However, maybe you send someone into the classroom with a teacher, and and they have that conversation beforehand, like, what are the things you wanna work on? What are the things we wanna, we wanna accomplish here? And then that person works hand-in-hand in there. And and I think Sarah said, like, maybe the coach might teach a lesson and then model something, and then work with that teacher and offer some feedback, um, and and so on. Um, trust is huge, right? Working with teachers, not coming at it from, I saw what you did, you should do it this way, but look at what our students need, how can we get it from there? And building that trust, um, with with the teachers. So offering guidance and feedback, um, inspiring teachers, this is, I, if you ask my colleagues, one of the things I love too about my job is, you know, I was really thinking that maybe I would do a lab about photosynthesis, and then, ooh, did you think about this? And would we do this, and would we do that? And like, that energy, not all, everyone in every building has colleagues that bring that energy to science. And so I think having someone to actually be that thought partner with is a really, really important part of an instructional coaching model. So, um, one of the things that Tanya from Lincoln said was, it boots on the ground. Like, that's the thing, that's the difference between, um, professional development and an instructional coach. They are there on the ground with you, they are building that team. You have that trust, you're sharing your ideas, you're inspiring each other, you're exchanging, you're working towards success together. And that's really what I would like to bring. Now, the idea of one science coach versus three is, it's a totally different model. The, what the elementary is asking for is they're gonna be presenting a new curriculum. These teachers need that, they need it. I would say, one of the things, the question was, what happened before when they brought in that new, um, the inch of twenty-three, when they added the math curriculum then? Maybe it wasn't good, maybe the training wasn't as good as, you know, if a teacher had that training in there, maybe we would have seen different results. So, um, the idea that we are starting with, I didn't even know the level of the literacy coaches at at the elementary level, that's amazing. We're adding the math layer. Let's have a district K-12 science, just to kind of get things going before we move into a more structured model there as well. Um, so we've got these kids, science is the thing that kids are most excited about. Believe it or not, it's true. When you give them the hands-on stuff and you get them going, they love it, they ask questions, they're curious. We need to harness that, and we need to take it all the way from the beginning to the end and keep them going. Um, now, I am only a high school teacher, which is why these are high school examples. So this stuff is happening in classrooms all over now in part. Look at those kids, they are engaged, they are into it, they are happy to be learning this science, this stuff we call science. This is happening throughout our district, it's happening at the elementary level, but it's happening in little pockets with teachers that are comfortable, with teachers that are willing to find that curriculum piece, with teachers that are willing to hit out of the cupboard. You know, whatever it is, it's happening. It's happening at the middle school. They have adopted the Open Saiad, um, curriculum, which I have been working with at Open Saiad High School rollout, and training teachers on how to use that curriculum at a high school level. And it really is, it's a great curriculum. And so this stuff is happening in the middle school as well. And so we just need to figure out how to make it happen more and in a systematic way that reaches all the children in the district, all the students. Um, my proposal, you guys, like, these three experts, you know, they, they're administrators who have been seeing the use of the building. I'm, I'm a chemistry teacher who wants to bring science more to our district. So these are ideas that I have based on the people that I've spoken to, um, what we could do to help push science forward. And you guys also saw the proposal ahead of time, so if they have any questions on that, we can come back to that, I'm not gonna go through it. Um, I didn't expect a big coaching year the first year, um, maybe a little bit at the middle school if high school teachers are interested, um, but kind of more of a planning and, um, and figuring who's organized kind of year. Except if, um, the elementary teachers, they've got a big piece to to bite on and chew with now, but there are some, we, um, Denise Church and Karen around the K-12 science community, and they did reach out to the K-12 science community and say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what's being proposed. What do you guys think? They should be willing to pilot, um, some of the science. And and some teachers said yes, and they wanted, they're very interested in bringing science back to their classroom. So the thought is, maybe in this first year, we could choose a couple curriculums, choose a couple lessons. The science coach could go in, help the teachers plan out that lesson, help them, or, you know, get their materials, because right now none of that's there, you know, you need five slippers, you know what I mean, those kinds of things, help them, um, get that ready, and then work with those teachers in really a very supportive role. Like, yeah, what lesson are we doing? We can, we can come in there, I can come in there and do that with you, or, um, just be your hands-on helper, like, if you're doing that, you might want another person. But those kinds of things, and just really being in there for that collaboration. Um, the second year is when, um, the coaching would really begin, and this is another reason why they need a coach per building. If with this model, with one science coach, only Coach Samhanna Elementary, uh, and this is the, the coaching model that I edited from Lake Orient. Uh, those coaches, they were using three science instructional coaches in Lake Orient, and they were doing, um, five-week cycles. And so, and you can only work with three to four teachers at a time. And so you would identify a cohort, maybe start K one, do K one. So with this model and one coach, you're talking about three years to get to everybody. But it would be that building, so that's why it's so important that they have the, the, um, the three coaches to provide that support in real time for all those classes. That's gonna make that happen much better. Um, so the last thing I wanted to bring up was the STEM labs, which is a huge piece of what's coming, and we're so excited. I think there needs to be some, some help in the facilitation, or the STEM coach can, or the science coach could help with that. What does an elementary STEM lab look like? What is it at high school? What's in middle school look like? How are they gonna be used? So we're gonna plan in physical space, but who's gonna be looking at the curriculums? Who's gonna be helping teachers decide? Who's gonna be advocating for, we need a STEM teacher? We need a STEM coordinator to run those labs, you know, those kinds of things. Who's gonna be looking at us practice and what's happening in, in this, in our region and what's happening with STEM? Now, the people that are doing that are Mr. Towsky and Mr. Dorga. They're busy, right? So this is just one more thing that can, um, can assist. So, I'm ready for your questions. We'll kind of go from Robin here. Okay. This time, 'cause I know Mr. Klein was on that, we're gonna start with Mr. Klein.
Thank you. Uh, it's, it's immensely impressive to see you've been supreme, on your own, kind of come forward as a public. Uh, that's, it's awesome, but thank you for doing that. Um, yeah, there are so many things in here that I love, right? Um, if those of you who don't really know, when N G S S came in, what, six years ago? A year ago? Um, it was new at the time, I mean, it was.
Yeah, it was actually.
It really changed the model of science education. It wasn't just new set of standards, it was a shift in the way we think about teaching science and learning about science in classrooms. Um, and our middle school and high school teachers, they have that scientific background, but they don't always understand that model. Um, and so someone rich in that model, the background, in that idea of kind of figuring out science and helping kids to make sense of the science flow around them under this new model is powerful, and they need to be able to see that and understand it. I think that's, I think that's a big piece of that. At the elementary level, the comfort level is always there, so, but I think elementary. So, but I think elementary, the idea of having this piece there, the STEM lab coming in, having a science coach to kind of push that into the classroom some, to have, develop that cadre, all of these teachers are comfortable, are excited about it. Science will take care of itself, they see it happening, it will take care of itself because it is exciting. It's super engaging with the kids. And they're just trying to figure out the world around them, and they're using their mathematics skills, they're using their E.L.A. skills. And there's so much research data that suggests that when we teach science in classrooms, we're not stealing time from the E.L.A. and mathematics, we're actually making the E.L.A. and mathematics more powerful. And we're enhancing that work. There's some framework out there by Dr. Honey Wright and Dr. Middy Gobbles from U of M and MSU.
MSU.
Yeah. That just powerfully speaks to this idea that we can make our math and our E.L.A. better through scientific endeavor. And history has its same piece, I don't want to socialize out of the mix. We're not talking about socializing today, maybe we need socializing. But, but it is that, it's the application, the integration, this piece of that. So that's enough, I, you know, I think that's just a big problem.
Thank you so much, Mr. Klein. Mr. Arnn.
I'm, I look at this and we've got three math coaches, all these coaches, are you going to be able to do all of this?
She's very freaking big.
Well, that's when I was writing the proposal, I was like, oh, this is a lot. I, I, well, and that's why it's a proposal, right? I think that one of the first, most important things will be to look at the needs, the actual needs.
A two-year pilot.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
That was my proposal. I mean, honestly, probably should be longer, but, and that's something that we could discuss. I love teaching, though. So this is something that I've always dreamt about, but making it a two-year pilot also might be bad. If at the end of two years, I'm missing my students in my classroom, that that would allow me to, to transition back.
It opens the door to continue.
And, or, or open the door to continue, or open the door to expand, like, like all of that. So I thought two years was a good amount of time to kind of see what we could accomplish.
So we can talk about it. If that model allows your classroom, you're a teacher, when you're in your teacher hat, allows you to be like a model classroom where for other teachers, you can kind of work together in a, in a true D.O.C. format. And what does this look like, what does this actually feel like? Remember at high school, you were part of the coaching.
Yeah, as I said, elementary school classroom could come in.
So no coaching in the first year, just more of, where do you need that?
Well, actually, I would love to coach in the first year. It would be the elementary school.
I mean, you can incorporate that.
Would, yeah. The elementary school will be focusing on that. And so the coaching there would be limited to, if they, if we do have some volunteers that choose to pilot, would be limited to me going in there. So it would be more like kind of helping them with the pilot than running the coaching. I guess it is still coaching, we're going to be assisting them. But at the, at the middle school, they do have some younger teachers that maybe haven't had any GSX training, they haven't been trained in Open Scied, so helping to facilitate some of those things as well. So yes, there would be some coaching, just not that coaching model of the second year that I.
I guess that's my hope, I mean. And I'm not, you know, I think we need coaches, but how do you cover all the elementary schools, the middle school, even the high school?
Yeah, that really is a bigger problem than one, right? Right? That would be, once this is.
It, it could, I mean, it's just not feasible, it wouldn't be fair to set that as the expectation. That, you know, I mean, the middle school and the high school, I think that's a reasonable job because again, where there's six, seven elementary, seven middle school science teachers and then who's your department, seven or eight? So like, that's a much more reasonable thing and you're typically choosing what hours, what going to, what classes. But to set the expectation that Barry could cover them, the elementary.
It sounds like a unique position.
It would be great for her to be, like, think systematically about the elementary school first year.
Well, how does this, this is a brand-new created position.
Correct.
Is that open to a way?
This would value. No, because we're, we're, it's part of our schedule. Yeah, we'd actually be able to put this right in the schedule.
I'm just looking at the other teachers.
No, you're right, yeah, 100%. It's a real good question, see, because we're not things that we were able to do. Because of the transition of some of our musical teachers going over to the high school, who also has the same certification, can pick up a couple of various classes that then please marry up a couple of hours and then work with other schools.
Okay, I'll make sure.
I've got some other questions, but maybe at a different time. Because we're running short.
Mrs. Lippy? Hi, thank you. Just, just one quick one. If with the other proposals, administration is heading them, like oversight accountability is there. You've proposed this, so is it building principal, who's the overseer of the?
Yeah, administration will still oversee.
It'd be the principal.
Okay, good, thanks.
Mrs. Slopey? First of all, I appreciate the, the plan with the teacher support samples, that was very helpful. Also, one of the things that you said, bring science back to the classroom. In my limited tenure as an elementary school principal, that was one of the things that teachers requested the most. They didn't have enough time for it, they didn't know how to orchestrate it, they didn't know, they needed some inspiration, someone with insight, someone with that science background. So I, and again, the, the point of use, the use of the STEM lab, so often those, those rooms end up empty because no one's quite sure what to do with them. And I think it also speaks to what Mike is talking about, that integration of science, math, literacy, and moving towards a more integrated model. Love it, thank you.
Mrs. Hammond? I'm very excited about this. As a science major myself and an elementary teacher, like half life as a mom, and I contest that we did team teaching back in the day. And, you know, we were always graphing, charting, analyzing. And I really feel that the math skills were enhanced by using, you know, real life, documenting their data and charting things and measuring and all things. So I'm very excited about this. You know, you do your work. Not too many of our elementary teachers that are science majors are in here. But, so this is exciting, but I think getting to building, you know, has some help with those.
And I, I would tell you what will happen is those teachers that open it up, like, say, yeah, come on in, let's do a couple of lessons. If the, if the excitement will.
Oh, yeah.
They will love it, and the teachers will, and they'll see that, oh, well, that wasn't so bad. You know what I mean? I think it's definitely something that.
We're probably going to get more requests.
I hope, you're right, I'm very busy.
I know it was, there were requests all along, for many years, you know. I always thought shifting some of our high school teachers into the elementary building, to help them out, was something, tends to say, you know, whether I was, was a great idea. So thank you.
I, of course, want to thank you too, and I know that we're running a little short on time, but I love the fact that you already solved my cost and sustainability question, so that already answered it clear. Joking, the only reason I'd say no is because then you might not teach my children. But therefore you would touch all the children, that sounds wrong. But you know what I mean, enrich all the children's lives in the school and the district, so that to me would be worth it alone. And as Mr. Klein was saying, I love the fact that the integrative piece that Slopey touched on too. And you already see it, I mean, you've got physics, you've got chemistry, you've got micro. I mean, all of those have math, I mean, forensics at this point now, you have, I mean, all of those are using math too. So I do feel that that is just a huge, huge opportunity and anything besides.
Hey, if you want to ask me, very, it is not mentioned, but she has spent a lifetime getting herself prepared in this kind of, kind of commission role.
Yeah.
So we have the MSKA giving off Saturdays, five Saturdays in a year, every year, for all I can remember. She is part of the leadership team of the mission chapter. She went and spent 15 days in Holland for us. And then, I don't know, time in the summer. And so she's got this unique data background.
And thank you, because we would let high schools be graduated and my students be one of them. They could email you, go anytime, come to school, and you still help them. So, honestly, I know, and you. Because a lot of people don't do that, so I appreciate that, thank you so much. Well, I want to, I know, I know, I know, so. So we appreciate you very much, thank you. So, Mr. Arnn, I know we have not more, are there those old buttons, should we just keep going?
Yep.
So that takes us back to some additional occupational therapists.
We've got the total, the total, or this quickly. We've got additional occupation therapists.
For those of you that are just joining us, we're still finishing up our work session, so you just get to listen. So just have fun with that.
Relax.
That's right.
So I have a time, I'll go on old school, so we can.
Sorry, we already called old today.
They're going to have a proposal that I know you've already received, but probably contains this kind of a breakdown of workloads for the current occupational therapist, additional.
All right, and I would like to introduce our current occupational therapist, Marie Stoyfick. She has been working with us for how many years? Two years. So basically, the first thing that I'd like to address is what an occupational therapist does. And in the school setting, they work primarily with students who are struggling with fine motor, gross motor skills, sensory and behavioral issues, and it is heavily focused on the elementary level. They assess, they consult, they monitor, they provide therapy as deemed appropriate. And they are considered direct service providers and evaluators. So the profession that most, is most alike would be considered speech therapist, for example. And in the Michigan rules for special education, it's recommended that speech therapists don't exceed a ratio of 60 students to one speech therapist. So it is very appropriate to kind of keep that in mind, keep that ratio in mind when thinking about occupational therapists as well. Right at this point, our occupational therapist, 30% of her salary is paid out of Act 18 funding. And that is specifically our A.S.D. students, for our classrooms K through 12. We have 20 students that participate in those classes. Her remaining time is to cover the needs of students in all other programs throughout the district. What we're finding is that it is becoming increasingly difficult for our, for Maureen to be able to attend IEP meetings, behavioral review meetings, complete necessary paperwork, and provide services, meshed with what's indicated on the students' IEPs. Starting this school year, Maureen is going to have a caseload of 82 students. And all I can say is that it is a significant challenge for her to do all of the responsibilities and give the students the attention and the support that they need. As part of the proposal, I did call local special education providers to get an idea of how they handle occupational therapists within their district. And what you'll find is that there is a lot of variability amongst the districts. The reason for that is because some districts are heavily center-based, meaning they've got a lot of center programs in their system. Lincoln Park, for example, has a very large A.S.D. center program. Taylor has a very large Pohai, physically or otherwise health impaired program. And so there's a variety of occupational therapists that are hired for those centers specifically. But what we're finding is that there is increasing OT services being provided to students that may be considered mild or as a preventative measure before looking at special education services. And so I think that the district that's probably the most consistent with us would be Southgate. And Southgate basically does have an Act 18 occupational therapist that works with their minor system yearly impaired students. But they also have a district occupational therapist. And that has a caseload of 50 to 60 students and works with students that aren't necessarily center-based, but they may need, you know, additional support in a general education classroom. And so based on the information that I, I looked through, my recommendation would be that we hire one additional full-time occupational therapist just to ensure that the high-quality services for our eligible students are delivered consistently with their IEP. And that we remain compliant with special education laws and procedures. I believe that this would strike the right balance for our students and our staff and put in public schools. I wanted just to provide that general overview. Maureen can provide much more of a specific logistics of, of, you know, for day-to-day operations, if you guys have questions.
A little round robin for you, just kidding.
All right.
All right, well, start with Mrs. Hammond.
Oh, I don't know where to start. This is actually the first time I've seen some of this.
Oh, okay. Yes, on the second page, Maureen and I spoke a little bit about breaking down what the roles and responsibilities would look like if a second OT was approved. And essentially, Maureen would be working, continue to work at Lindeman and address the A.S.D. students that are there. There are 15 students that are going to be there this year. Plus, there are 19 students that are considered general education students that she works with as well. And then she would also work with the Cross Cadore of a classroom that we are just opening up this fall at Ben. There are 15 students enrolled in that classroom. And so that brings her total caseload of 49 students. And then on top of that, she would be a consultant for tier two, tier three preventative interventions at Lindeman specifically. And then the second occupational therapist would be assigned to Benny for their general education students, which are nine right at this point. Arno, which has an early childhood program. Currently, Maureen sees three students out of that program. The cognitively impaired classroom, she worked with nine students there. General Ed, or 10 students that Maureen works with, that will be assigned to the second occupational therapist. And then there's only one student at the middle school, none, none at the high school, and one at Krieger. So the second occupational therapist would have 33 students, but they would also be that consultant for tier two, tier three, at Benny and Arno.
Okay, a total question based on ignorance. The numbers dropped heavily in middle school and high school, is that because we provided services earlier than they normally need them?
Well, I was going to say, so I've been in the range here, and so how it started out was it had a huge shift in the last 10 years. So what we're trying to do is there's so many kids coming in. Usually they start with ECP or early elementary. By the time they transition from, get to sixth grade, all accommodations are put in place. And they are doing even research and programming, categorical classroom program that they are. And that's when they are dropped, higher tier. We are trying to stick to that because typically, once the kids that are in the A.S.D. categorical classrooms, they have all their needs already put in place, anything new came up, then they would call me in. Otherwise, it's usually a transition from elementary to middle school that I would step back. I do have, there are nine hundred students that I see written as a console, and it's written under the accommodation page, and those are kids that are usually physically impaired. I, I stand because they have e-learning, you know, physical health impairments. But it's strictly in order to keep an eye on them when the parents are very worried about what's going on with the child. So that, that would be split tier between the two of us. So.
Also, ignorance, it says one student, three. One student, we just do that.
We have to provide that.
We have to provide that.
Yes, our federal funding and special.
And before, it used to have a lot more. It's down to the point where we're really trying to watch it. A big part of my job to in the NSL is to be, be both preventative, the MTSS. I don't recall it's the MTSS, he's the data dive, but right after, either, you know, a principal can have it, the context make. If there are these items that we're concerned about, they'll contact me, the building reps will contact me, which usually are psychologists coming up or women or teaching consultants. And then I go in and I do observations and they, I have to do multiple observations to understand these kids. But a lot of times, my job then is putting strategy in place, whether it's sensory, behavior, or academics, where do I think it's going out enough? So it's a process of elimination with the hopes of that the accommodations that we can place are going to prevent them from having to go to full social education.
The other thing I was going to mention, just to follow up on your question, I think Maureen is being, she's been very humble. The services she provides, there's no question about it. They are very effective for a lot of kids, and those services are no longer even a second very much.
Yeah.
Do you return all the IEPs?
Yes, exactly. Anybody use my case a little bit longer?
Anybody who's on my face will be locked up. That's all.
Is, is that safe? I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying, I, I, I know how many, like, our teachers do, right? So, right off.
I'm just trying to figure out the math for Southgate. You state that one, on the bracket.
The data to the right says one district and one tactic team.
Yep, so they contract out for their uh, district occupational therapist. They go through a third party. And then, they go through Taylor Public Schools for their occupational therapist that works for the center programs, the modest, severely impaired. So that's, through Taylor, it's shared with Taylor, so that's a full of teams. They are shared with Taylor, so the one is handling 60 to 50.
Yep.
So I used to be the, um, I used to be the O.T. provider for all the consortium, which Southgate is part of. So I used to go to Southgate, Grand, Walter, um, Fly Lab, Rosio. Prior to me becoming full-time here, I was also part-time in Melvindale. So when this job became part-time, and Melvindale was part-time, I let the other ones go. But, um, there was a difference, you know, views of the begins on providing the services. Um, but the, the things that are off, we have been Melvindale, Allen Park, which is growing wrong. We, there was a huge increase over the years, it hasn't changed. It's constantly grown every year, even, you know, aside from COVID, that type of stuff. Um, so the, the need is great. We have a lot of kids that come in and start kindergarten, and they have never touched a pencil, crayon, play the game, done a puzzle, nothing. So these kids that come in, even if they're developmentally, they're age-appropriate, they don't have any skills to be able to do what the administration needs them to do. So they're at a year or two-year delay already. Um, it's consistent, we're having a lot more sensory processing problems, a lot more behavior problems, lifestyles. You know, the family environments have changed, those all different kinds of things are adding to it. But I don't think that it's not gonna keep increasing every year either, so.
And random question, just for funding, just so.
Yeah.
Just for funding purposes, this would be an OT, not a Coda, right? You can't do a Coda for something like that.
Um, so a Coda, uh, there's a difference to what a Coda can do. In terms of like, participating in IDB.
Correct.
Um, and the funding would come through IDEA, uh, which is a global fund for special education.
Yes, we, we, we're, we're, our FDP for IDEA, you can fill out that. Okay. And just so you know, a Coda is a certified occupational therapist, so they just don't have that. Right, see? Um, okay, so, are we ready for questions?
Okay, so back to what Steve was saying about Southgate, and we have the Act 18 for the schools. Would we be eligible for that?
Um, it's, it's something that we can look into. Um, it's something that I personally, I've never been a fan of, quite honestly. Uh, because, once again, um, we are at Taylor's discretion in terms of where they can come and how often they might be able to come. Um, I much prefer to have our own people, who will never come to us.
I remember when Maureen was kind of, personally, several others.
I was kind of directed by the district, though, not by Taylor.
Right. Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I guess, there's more to it.
The way that Taylor outreach two works is that usually, depending on their program, it's usually a max of PTs, two, it's a max of two times per month. Um, it's usually, you have to file paperwork to see if they'll even, you know, speed the speed they're graded. And then it's more of like, they come in the classroom, they get some suggestions. You could see that I work for both of these, both of these rooms here. They'll come in and do direct services with sub-certain kids. But it's more to make sure that things are in place, that they can use, it's organized, utilized in the classroom. So it would be the same way with OT.
No questions?
This is a, no questions, thank you.
No questions.
No questions.
Mr. Klein? And I also already interjected as well. So I really appreciate your gracious time, um, for coming and for the proposal, and for this also interesting other things that we haven't seen yet, so that helps us understand a little.
It's already down in the workbook.
Yeah. That really helps us understand.
Good.
Um, and IEPs, I know how long those take, so, um, I know you do as well, it's just. Um, so, uh, you know, I appreciate that, especially pointing it out that it's 82 students and, um, you know, the process of that. Anything else from you, Mr. Klein?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
All right, that leads us to citizen comments from the agenda, and you do not have any corrections yet, do you? Yeah, good, perfect. All right, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the work session.
Come on.
It's been moved and supported, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Mr. Darga, should we take a break?
You can take it.